Evening again, everyone. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen. So I will first call the Board of Selectmen to order for our first budget hearing. Today is February 1st, 2022.
And welcome, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen. I would like to call to order the special meeting, special joint meeting, Board of Finance, um, February 1st, 2022. Shall we take a question?
Okay. Otherwise, as the United States of America, in the republic which is stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's not like you're way. It's not like you're way.
I'm just wanting to tell you.
I'm not that way.
It's a good idea.
All right. If I can clarify for our folks, there's a flag out in front there.
It was that direction. Yes. That or the street capital.
Right.
Um, I just want to make a couple of opening remark remarks, especially for our newest Board of Finance members. And wel- welcome to the most important thing we do all year. A lot of important things, but this is really sets the stage for everything else that happens for the next year. Uh, our charter is unique. I have not found another one like it in, uh, every, right, every town charter in the state of Connecticut, but I've read quite a few. And most of the charters, uh, with regard to Board of Finance operations tend to focus on the bottom line. So like with your Board of Finance, Board of Education budget, you know, you guys have bottom line control, but the Board of Education wants it set, can move things from department to department, and really that's their territory and none of us have touched that. Um, now under state law, that does not exist on the town side, but most other town charters really just kind of say, you guys kind of pay attention to the bottom line, pay attention to the grip, to broad policy and then let the town administration kind of take care of the rest. Uh, within certain limits. Ours is unique in that, uh, there is a charter requirement. And the purpose of that, to have these joint meetings, and the purpose is so that you all can hear from the department heads and see what their needs are and make informed decisions. So it's, it's, uh, really kind of cool that we do it that way. Uh, and I want to thank our administrators, our department heads for being here. And it's going to be an interesting two weeks. It's always, uh, a lot of give and take, a lot of really good information. The thing that I would really urge you to do, uh, especially the, the new members, you're going to hear just a ton of stuff. So, um, ask questions. There aren't any bad questions. There aren't any inappropriate questions because when the presentations are done, we have to sit in a room and deliberate. You know, we're going to the Board of Selectmen do it first, then you guys do it. And, you know, you, you may think of something that you need to, you know, because you want to make informed decisions. So this is the time to really dig into it. Don't worry about keeping everybody up late at night. Uh, you know, I've gone back 22 years in the Southway time on the board then. I can remember we had snow days. We were in on Saturdays for nine hours at a time, sometimes making up the difference. It can be tough, but it's worth it. So, uh, that's, that's, I, I hope you will, uh, you know, dig into this and ask as many questions as you possibly can, because that's the, the most important part. So, uh, Cynthia, did you want to make any opening remarks before we call as the, the first witness?
Just to say that if you have a question, probably someone else has the same question. So, yeah, ask questions.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to call up our, our first presentation today. It's by our town clerk, Lisa Bird. Welcome, Lisa. This is Department 12.
No applause? Hi.
Hi.
Do you need, you don't need the microphone. I have a big mouth. I'm good.
Well, that's for recording for them.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'm sure we've recorded. Um, so I'm going to do this briefly as I was asked to, um, make it quick. So, uh, first of all, thank you for my raise last year. Um, that was very gracious and I, I, I feel like I earned it, so I want to say thank you. Basically, it's pretty cut and dry. My budget does not go up in any of my accounts, um, other than the election expense. And the reason that did was because I went over last year by $1,800. Um, this year we have, um, several, uh, votes to have. We have, um, budget referendum, which we don't know if that's going to be one, two, hopefully just one. Uh, I also have two primaries in August, and that's a, that's a given for state election. Um, the state local election with the previous, um, having 69% turnout, and that was, uh, and also taking into account the growth of the population. So, um, that's the process. Uh, so legal notices for the budget primaries and election with constitutional questions verbatim. In 2018, the cost for the legal notices alone were $6,638. So the constitutional questions have to be published, um, verbatim. So that is very expensive. Um, and they've reverted back to now we have to publish on the web and in the newspaper. Real estate market has exploded, um, with the conveyance tax numbers, as you can see in our, in our, spreadsheets have grown by 56%. So, I mean, our income is up. You don't have, I know a lot of you don't have like a revenue comparison sheet. Um, last year, we netted a million 99,125, with 123,000 going to the state for my accounts. And, um, that was a huge increase over 2019, 2020. And that is generally, that's basically real estate alone. So town made a lot of extra money there. And first half of 2020, uh, of the fiscal year, um, we had taken in quite a bit of money as well. So we're on, we're on par. We're a little bit lower, but we're on par as we were for last. Um, our grants have the, I usually apply for and, and approve, get approved, the historical documented, uh, grant, and that is for, you know, preservation of land records and vital records and anything in my office. So they've upped that amount because of our population increase from 5,500 to 7,500. So I was just told that, you know, recently. So, um, that we get every year. I use that, I've been for preserving the vital records from 1855 forward because they are originals and they're starting to deteriorate. So that's what I'm using that for. We're also, um, started doing electronic reporting. And, um, the first year we did electronic recording, um, it was 9.1%. Um, and that was in 2020. In 2021, we've grown to 18.9% electronic reporting. And the excellent part of that is we save postage. This year, um, year to date, we spent over $6,000 in postage. I'm sorry, 5,000 in postage. So my office expense account was 5,000 just for postage. So that is a $7,000 account. So 5,000 of that is certainly for balance. So the electronic regis-, uh, recording is what saves us the postage. We do it all electronically. We email the documents back. So moving forward, that's our trend is going to go more for that, so. And that's pretty much it. I mean, the 3,000 for the, um, the election account and everything else is staying the same. Any questions?
I'd like to start. Lisa, you said the grant, does that go into the revenue side? The, the $7,000 grant that you managed here?
It's not a revenue. It's given to the, well, it's given to the state, uh, given to the town clerk to use only for preservation of records.
So do you use that for like part-time employees?
Can't do that. No, it's.
Oh, that's what I'm asking you. Where's the mon- where's the money now?
Yeah, it's specific. It's specific to the preservation, the historic document preservation account from the state library. So I can use it, um, for, to hire people to re-index the, the, um, not hire people, but have, I have to have workers be able to re-index the land records into the system. So.
So you're paying somebody with that grant to do it?
But that's.
I'm asking.
Is that an outside contract?
It's an outside contract.
Yeah, that's wrong.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no. Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a general fund account. It's a balance sheet account, just like one.
But I have, I choose to use it however I want and however I see fit. That the historic preservation has to be done. And like I said, I'm using it for vital records right now because 1855 through 1950 is all deteriorating, curling and turning yellow, we can't see them. So, and that's something you can't afford.
And line 5101, how many, you mean employees is that?
5101, I don't have.
It's your salary. How many, how many people do you have?
I have two assistants.
You have two assistants and you're not in the union?
And myself. No, I'm not.
So street total there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I prepared, um, I prepared documentation, um, which I just did today. Um, Fairfield County, we are on par with the same population as most other town. The other towns in Fairfield County have more than two assistants. They run with two plus a part timer or three assistant town clerks.
I, I just wanted to know what that salary equaled out.
Yeah, 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 no, 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 I get it. I get it. Anyone else?
Lisa, where, where are you at the, uh, the, those vital statistics?
Where am I now?
Yeah.
I just had four.
You said from 1855 to 19 something, so.
Um, up to 19, I just had 1902 done. So there's many years to go. I mean, the, I can do four years of what they do. They're glued onto paper. So this preservation company actually steams them off. They preserve them and they're all in separate, um, you know, the paper, can't think. But they're putting it in a preserved envelope that is clear and that preserves that from any further deterioration. So they're all individually filed then with me. And I get them on microfilm as well. So there's no way we could ever lose those documents.
My, my question is, do we need to accelerate that process before you lose some of those?
I don't see that it's. I, what I've been doing is picking and choosing the year. So like, let's say 1903 isn't as deteriorated as 1910. So I'll pull 1910 first and send it off to the, the company. And, um, so that's how I've been jumping around. But right now I've gotten from 1855 up to 1900. And those for the past few years have been using the grant for that. And actually I have extra $2,000 to do. And each book is about, um, $2,000 to do. Very expensive.
I have a quick, quick question.
Sure.
When you say become a microphone, do they digitize these or these, does actually microfilm like use your stuff?
Yeah, I get both. So I have the actual origi- original document plus a backup of the micro, they microfilm them for us. It doubles, you know, double protection. What else?
All right. So I just, if, if, if you used it for anything else, it would be supplying with funds, right? So that's why it's absolutely necessary that it just.
There's specific criteria that I have to meet within that grant, so.
So the contracted services for 5,000, that you have something else?
That is for the general code update to the code book, which is very expensive because I have to also include the zoning regs, which have to be reprinted completely anytime there's an amendment to the zoning regs. Um, I also, um, I do the laser piece through that, um, the software, the contracted services go through all that. So, um, you know, all pretty much operational contractual, um, things except for my land record, uh, account, which basically is the heart and, and the lungs of the office.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think it was the best presentation, so.
So far, so far, so far.
No, I think I totally plugged it. I honestly do.
You were the best presentation.
So far, just so far, so far.
No, no, I've just been honest. I'm very defensive now.
I really. No wrong answer.
Am I done? Am I done now?
You're done.
Excellent, ladies, welcome up to tax selector, Paula. This will be Paula's, uh, doctor's first presentation. First presentation as our tax lawyer.
Be gentle.
Please. Easy on the questions. Now, um, thank you for having me. And, uh, as you can see, my budget is, uh, pretty simple. The salaries, uh, because we have, um, four, it was a decrease each new hire in this department. So, you know, that category went down. Um, this office expense, I'm increasing 1,900 due to the postage, um, plus mainly, uh, dues and education. All four of us, the two new hires need to go to classes to get certified along with the assistant, myself, both need to go to class for recertification. So we increased that budget by 1,070 because of, um, hopefully classes take place in person. If not, you know, maybe roll it over. And then mileage, um, again, we've got four of us traveling to classes, so we increased that by 800. Uh, the collection rate right now, I did my numbers this morning. Um, we're actually at 78%, 75.7% collections right now compared to last year. We were at 76.11. Um, I did and opened up, attached a, uh, sheet showing you my, um, bills that we send out, the refreshment bill numbers, um, how many we send out for the billings, for the language billings, also for the utility accounts. Um, so we're still obviously flexing for the rest of the fiscal year, but numbers are there.
Okay, I just have office expense. Is there a type on there? I thought she said it went up 1,980 dollars on my sheet.
Are you looking at tax cluster? Right. No, but you've got your cheat sheet too.
Oh, okay, tax.
There was a skip. So there you go.
All right, never mind, Paul, that's my ability to read.
She's the tax blocker. Looks like I'm reading you.
Thanks. Any questions? So my overall changes, a decrease of $2,108. Um, yes, these changes, by the way, uh, what we collected last year was up to $17,274, which I forgot to write down the amount from last year. From last year.
You think you can get this pound out 2% better? Actually, I have a little question here. Uh, with respect to education, and we're adding a little more this year. How often do the research come? Is this an annual research or is this a year?
Research station, we have to have 30 hours within five years.
Okay.
Any good questions? Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
That was the best presentation.
For a first time. You blew Lisa away.
All right, next up is, uh, Brett from 230 Public Works. I'd like to welcome Karen Swenson to Brett from Public Works. And everybody with you.
So, and your hardcover book is 40-30. So you're going to draw attention.
Oh, Matt, before we start, can I just, Bobby, your timing on these storms have been unbelievable. I think you're going to be challenged on Friday with this ice storm. But that last ice storm was amazing. And, and I heard the truck coming up at 5:00 in the morning. I said, what the hell is he doing? You guys were right on. Good job.
Thank you. Did you notice that the last one was named Winter Storm Bobby?
Yeah. You really just come up to what a, a little short.
I'm so disappointed. They needed to be Winter Storm Bobby. I was real slow on that.
Little boy. But he's a little guy.
Want to copy that whole bit of the tour? Should you charge anyone more?
Did you take a poll down?
No.
Oh, oh, oh.
My pictures on every telephone pole was down. Every hallway.
There's a poster in the hallway. Okay, go ahead, Eric. Okay, um, 2:30, so I'll go to Public Works. This is the, uh, basically the office administration budget, if you will, uh, accounting in your budget. Um, what I'm going to do for all six of you is actually, uh, I'm just going to go through and, and use this time just kind of watch whatever's changed. Uh, and speaking of hasn't changed, obviously there, I mean, you all have the same sheet that I'm working on though, that Brad provided, so, uh, what I'm seeing. Um, so the first change there, or the only change in this count is going on long salaries. And that basically went up due to, um, raises for the highest level staff. And also, uh, a large chunk of that, um, is a request for part-time help. And that request is, so, um, just wondering about staff with myself. Bob was the assistant director as well as I was attending. We also have administrator, um, who also does reception, and we have a staff manager. So we're requesting 16,000 for part-time help to help with. Uh, basically, there are a lot of capital projects that we, uh, want or need to move forward. Um, and we're challenged in terms of getting all that done. In addition, we are also converting, um, all of our, uh, paper files to electronic and something called digital speech. All of that is actually, oh, I believe all the departments are doing that. It's going to ultimately be on, uh, website, to the website. Um, but just to go through some of the capital projects that are kind of out there. Uh, and when I'm talking about these not capital costs, you know, the administration project management comes with it. Uh, keeping track of all these consultants, designers, contractors. So we have, um, really where we're already going, we have three sidewalk projects, sidewalk, uh, construction projects, um, all of which have grants that go with them. So there's time, timeline associated with that. We have three culverts in various states of design. We have, um, several building renovations to the highway garage roof. The hydraulic, the lip system in the highway garage, the library is looking for elevator upgrade and also, um, some other improvements. The municipal center has several right here, including, uh, both elevators, modernized roads. The basement, there's hyperparades take place and several other renovations to front. Um, some of that is, is a part of the money. Again, just to reiterate, I'm making this point here in terms of administrative and project management in terms of, we're keeping track of. Um, fire department roof, the animal control building, old PD, barn renovation. There are several high school projects that were sustained with HAC. There were some replacements coming up. So I'm not going to go through all of them, but just to give you a flavor for sort of the capital projects that we're trying to move forward. So that's, that's basically it in terms of what changed here and why we're requesting that additional money. We have, um, the, the plan is to use an intern that's already kind of down in the department to kind of share the person with the building department as well. So, uh, basically, that's, that's it. That's, so. I don't know if you want to do questions here or?
Questions.
Thank you.
That was lovely. You mentioned the capital improvements, the, uh, movement of the highway. Is this the same one, Bobby, that we started with that one? And we shovel ready? Good.
2015, that's true.
So we're actually going to work this year. True. We're 12. We still have to do. And it's probably still the same when we come back from like that six years. That's what we got to get to.
It's seven years.
Yeah.
So what, what, what is the whole of that? Why would something like that take five years?
We're trying to, we're trying to address a bunch of structural issues down there. Um, you know, that building was put up in 1978 and it, and it's just a Barge Joyce trend building, right?
Is it a flat roof?
It's a flat roof, yes.
Barge roof?
Yeah, it's a Barge roof, flat roof. You know, and part of it's got a mock deck on it, a part of it's, you know. Um, so we need to make sure that we can hold up, uh, uh, more improved roofing system weight-wise.
Are you looking to put a pitch on it or are you just going to re-roof it?
We're going to re, we're going to. It looks to me like most of the skin has come off of that, off the roof of the building, re-skin. And then, you know, either mock deck put out or what, or try to throw out what exactly that means, want to hold on. So how far?
But that doesn't take five years.
I think we can talk about that weight thing for a while.
I'm just curious about this. Like, if we're doing a rubber roof. I'm not understanding. This is, I mean, the cost of rubber roofs has probably tripled since we. So I don't remember what we had budgeted for that.
250.
How much were you really thinking we're going to pay?
I remember it was 250.
I, I couldn't, I couldn't answer yet. Okay, so, all right. I'm sorry, where, where is that in the capital? Or is it very?
That money is very, very, very precious and so it's sitting in a savings.
250 and 2,000 is 250.
Oh, no, Kate, yeah, I don't know. You just brought it up. But I was just curious, this, uh, 250 was the original budget. I just know where those rubber roofs are down in terms of cost. That's crazy.
But Matt, if the league was approved five years ago, the 250, it wouldn't be on the capital plan anymore because it's been approved, right?
Right.
It's sitting on it.
It's allocated, right? And you're saying the allocation is on there also?
No, it's not showing up as having been approved and waiting to spend. And we're on the board of, 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 I read a long story about how you had to deal with buildings separately.
I remember the, the roof weight thing was, was big.
Oh, yeah, no, credit to you. Yeah, no, that was a big issue, right? And that's what we're trying to, yeah.
All right. My idea was, do we have it, is, do we have it somewhere on our radars?
Well, that's what we're working, that, that's a whole big list of projects, right? That, okay. One month, maybe.
Well, those, we consider capital projects, but we already approved it.
It's, it's been, it's sitting in the, the capital accounts. The short story for, uh, getting everybody up to date, especially the new folks, was approved back then. Brought a vendor in, vendor had looked up at the, the herders.
Barge choices, yeah.
And said, wait a minute, I see some corrosion. So they brought in an engineer. The engineer says this won't hold up any new roofing material. Then Hammeresco came in when we did the solar farm. They ran conduit through there and hung it from some of these same earth. And they said, we don't see a problem.
Yeah, thanks, Paul.
So then they go through another engineering process to try to figure out what's going on. So basically that brings us up to eight. Yeah, it's been, it's been a ridiculous five years.
But where's this, where's this building for speeding up? That's one of the town, town.
By the town.
Called the actual building.
Yeah.
Oh, Brady Trump, sorry.
Yeah. So the other thing that's been on here for a while is the animal control building. That's been approved for quite a while too. So what up with that? Just curious.
Well, I think that, that was kind of on hold and it was taken offline for a while because there was an idea that we should, uh, share the Danbury facility, which Danbury had planned.
Yeah, but the, the ones just put on that a long time ago. I mean, that was, you know, Deline, that was Deline's idea.
They were.
It was explored.
Well, there were, well, there were two things. Another one that explored that, that I didn't even touch on. So the first thing was the animal control facility. I think we had something like 60,000 or 70,000 estimate. And it was, it's really just for a temporary fix. Like it's fucking five years from now, whatever we do, we're going to have to do something else because it's a, it's a very decrepit old building. So the first thing we did was we talked to DOS. Because they were at, several years ago, planning to break ground out of the facility, which they're doing this spring, as a matter of fact, they're finally, finally raising the money. But, um, their protocols, you know, they, we talked about it for a long time. Their protocols don't allow, you know, you have to have animals that meet a certain behavior and health, uh, thing. So we, we can't really share that with them. So then the next thing was, uh, Danbury built a million dollar animal control facility. That's what the, the new one costs. Because the codes are changed. If you build a new one, it has to have separate areas for dogs and cats. It has to have a veterinary area, it has to have outdoor rooms, it has to have, uh, uh, climate control. It, it's a million dollars no matter what you do. So I had approached Mayor Fountain and said, um, you know, would you guys consider letting us share? So I had approached Mayor Fountain and said, you know, would you guys consider letting us share that? Because, you know, it's a big facility, it's not full, and he said, yeah. And then he went off and worked for Governor LaMond. So I talked to Mayor Calvo and see where we could pick that up, and he said, yeah, let's talk about that. Then the chief of police came in and said, we don't wanna share it with anybody, so we're kind of back to square one, trying not to be in a position where we. Spend sixty or seventy thousand dollars on something that's temporary, we have to tear it down in a few years or fix again. Versus, you know, sharing, which is, we're, so we're still trying to work out some kind of a shared arrangement with the council of governments. Which, which has done a study of the whole eighteen-town area. And it suggested that there are opportunities for this, so it's, it's not an end issue, we're still trying to work out something with Danbury.
My understanding when that was presented was that it was a state issue, that the state had said that that building had to be rehabbed or rebuilt. That was one of the premises that it was.
Well, we have, well, they, they have to make some improvements in there to address some of the safety things that the state brought up. State doesn't say you have to go to do it, what they say is if you don't fix this and this and this, yeah, you have to rehab certain things or else, you know, we're gonna start fighting you. They know, they know that we're working with Danbury trying to make great, so they backed off.
Okay, so you're saying that part of that sixty grand that was approved has gone to fixing specific things?
Yes, a small part, I don't know how much, not much, but yeah.
Yeah.
There had, there had been some things that have been fixed, we've got that, so we're not in bad shape with the state. But we, we do have to, we still have to solve the problem. If we build a new one, it can't be there, obviously, because it's by a wetland, that's, that's one of the problems, is the. East side of it is sinking into the wetland, split land, you know. But there were some, there were some fixes to address this, the urgency of the state.
I have a question about salaries, because I'm, I'm gonna have to discuss salaries for everybody. And so the breakdown of, this is full-time, part-time. Can you give us a breakdown, I don't care, I don't have to give you names and addresses, but just, you know, how many full-time, how many part-time, what the raises are?
Those, it comes, I think, you have to get the plan, but in terms of our staff, we have.
Yeah, I just think it'd be helpful for all the departments.
You went over it in the beginning, if you can just go slower, slower, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We can see.
It's yourself.
Yourself.
About?
And the amounts.
Like on the individual ones?
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested.
I don't have all the individual amounts.
Is it just, you're not talking about field staff, right?
I don't know, but that's my turn to agree.
Well, in terms of clarity, we're talking about myself, Kathy who is administrator, and Brittany Ferdinand, which is the engineer.
Yeah. So Ford full-time?
Yeah.
Who's the heir of the county?
And there was Brittany Carrington, but she, she just, she just resigned at certain point, so that's.
And so she's not in this mix.
Because she has, she's.
The noise is important.
You're curious, huh?
Yeah, the positions.
The positions, okay.
And one of those people is only fifty percent for the general fund, twenty-five percent for water, twenty-five percent for shore.
Okay, but that's kind of the key.
Is that the interpreter, is that the person?
No, that's the admin.
Just so I understand, sixteen thousand of that twenty-five thousand is additional request for part-time help, correct? So the actual raises for the people who are there is roughly nine thousand.
Yes, and some of that was the admins got promoted recently. So there was an increase.
But the, but sixteen thousand of the increase is the year it was.
Is actually more part-time.
So can we talk about that for just a second? You mentioned that some of these projects are ARPA funded, right? So assistant project manager work for the ARPA covered projects?
Correct.
But that's the budget.
This, this is separate from capital, this is, this is a, this is help with our project management. Basically, what we do from the ministry and our department to manage the projects, oversee the projects, move them forward. Hire consultants, select consultants, same thing, hire and select contractors, I think that works. That's first, and so it's, it's not the capital cost of the project.
So ARPA only covers the capital cost of projects?
It would cover if you had to hire a consultant daily, you could use ARPA to cover the consultant, Eric's talking about the workload. So.
The non-ARPA stuff.
Yeah, so he's talking about the amount of time his office spends on it, right Eric?
Right, right.
Yeah, so he's not talking dollars, he's talking time.
Is there any overlap with the ARPA projects and the projects, like, are those mixed overall, or do you have specific ARPA projects?
I know, in terms of my total list of projects, it's everything, regardless of where it's funded, whether it's ARPA or not, so.
I guess I'm just thinking because ARPA is a grant, I mean, ARPA is, it's like money, it's ARPA money for sixteen thousand, that's my question.
Yes. Yes.
I don't, I don't think you can do that.
Well, it depends on what it's for.
Well, can you explain to me just, what are the responsibilities? Like I, I, I can't believe a part-time person is gonna manage a project with sixteen thousand, just being honest with you. Like that, that, that I don't see happening, so what duties are you gonna give these part-timers, that's what I'm gonna ask them.
It's basically, the part-time worker that's gonna handle basic clerical work, just clearing out the remainder of, the rest of us.
Can, can, can we go back to, you, you mentioned the HVAC project in high school, what would be your duties on that job? You're not engineering in the house, right?
No, what my duties would be to help, so firstly, we go through, we put out an RFP, you have to write.
Saying you write that?
Yes, write the RFP to select, in, in case of that. Depending on the projects, so some of those projects, we write an RFP directly to a contractor, so like a simple project, like. Where we're just replacing the AC units, we just did one, two units on the roof for the high school.
That's if it's not going out to bid.
No, that went out to bid.
Oh, that one, okay.
Because that's pretty much just swapping out of equipment, it's straight RFP to the contractor. The other one that we just did is an RFP for design, so we're putting together a master plan for the HVAC at the high school. Because the building was built in different.
House project, right.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no, systems are all different pieces, so. We hired a consultant to look at that and come up with recommendations to cover the whole building, so that we're not just.
So your hiring consultant will do that, your, your hiring consultant will do that.
So we have an RFP for the consultant, we select the consultant, they'll do that design work, that design is the building department and so forth. It ends up being engineering plans, which then, at that point, once we've got engineering plans, that can be given to a contractor, so we put that in our contract.
So you're, you're overseeing it basically?
Yeah, some things are more complicated than others, it's hard point, which is, those two examples.
Just back to the part-time, how many hours of part-time does this sixteen thousand in a private working budget, like, usually have?
Like twenty hours a week, like half time.
So twenty, twenty hours a week.
Twenty dollars an hour, fifteen dollars?
Yeah.
Twenty dollars an hour, four, that'll be twenty something, so it's probably closer to fifteen, twenty, plus an hour, is that good?
Yeah, yeah.
So I get a little confused, this is the first time, obviously, I've had all this money coming in for COVID relief and projects. So I, wasn't the ESSER grant given to the board of ed to, and then they're using a portion of that for the HVAC? So your relationship to this project, the town didn't get that money, right? So in a sense, the ESSER grant should be some of it going to public works, am I crazy? Well, don't expect.
That's it.
The jury's gonna take that.
You want to do it?
It's not, it's not, it's not.
This is, this is getting a little complicated, but the, the COVID relief funds went two directions. So the board of ed has their own pot of it, and then the town has their own pot of it, so. Right now, we have an ARPA committee that is going through capital projects that relate to this. One of them being air handling at number of places, so for the high school, we're gonna be combining a little bit with the board of ed. We're gonna use some of ours, they're gonna use some of theirs to do that. Now, I wanna let you know also that we are, Brendan's been working for several weeks on an RFP to, to Bailey's question about administration. You know, how we just hired Geraldine from STV to, to link the, the police station. We're gonna be putting out an RFP for a project manager slash owner's rep. For about two or three-year period to go through all these ARPA, ARPA projects, because this is way more than we can handle and help, so we, we need.
And this would be paid by ARPA?
That would be paid by ARPA, what, what Eric is talking about is the general workload, like the, he was talking about the million and a half dollar sidewalk project.
Right, I know, I was just asking about the HVAC, because I know that was formerly supported, and I didn't know if there was overlap with your towns, the towns' ARPA funds. That's my only question, it's confusing, I totally understand the other aspects of projects.
Yeah, I just wanna make the point that in addition to the ARPA projects, there's also stuff in here, like, stuff you guys just approved.
Yes, of course there is, that's.
The pumps, the circulating pumps, the taking, ripping on oil tanks, I mean, there, there have been a lot of capital things in the last few years, so that's, it, it does require a lot of following.
Does anyone have any questions?
I, I just wanted to be clear, so this is just, this is not just, this is an additional part-time help for your department?
Yes.
Not necessarily specific to ARPA projects, right?
You mentioned just a minute ago that this was an intern running around, never sharing.
Yes.
So this is an intern that we're paying, two departments are paying, what, sixteen thousand each for four year week? So thirty-two thousand on the return? So the town.
Or is that split up with the big sixteen thousand?
I'm not sure.
We're, we're not using sixteen thousand for twenty hours a week for a year.
Yes.
Fifteen dollars an hour.
Right, but then that's for twenty hours, right, and then the same intern is bringing shirts somewhere else.
It's in the building department, right, or is that included in this?
That's, that's my, that was the last time I, so I, I'm, I'm only concerned with this.
You're speaking to your department, right?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if that's.
They've split it, but it may be in another department. Uh, Dan, we're not, we're not looking to hire a full-time intern. If it's gonna, it gets approved, that person's running around, I think Eric will look for his own person. That wouldn't be split amongst all the departments, and that would be that twenty hours or whatever the hours were.
Just when you said it, thought there was two interns, like one intern.
Well, I'm sorry, I, I think I can choose it because we are currently using interns in that way, but I don't, I didn't.
Can they respond?
He says he's in Florida.
I'm good.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so Eddie, we're moving on to two twenty fleet maintenance, from Eric, because he's still there.
Well, hey, sorry to get into the capital plan, you guys earlier, I'm so excited about my building, I forgot about it. It's really ten years, but it's really small, I forgot about it.
So can you get it smaller?
Yeah, it was smaller, I got it.
I know, it's.
Luckily you see, though, it could be plumpy.
Good evening, most of the increases, we're just gonna give you the reader's digest version, because as we all know, the prices of things have gone up. So I try to keep the budget minimum, tire budget's gone up, I, I think I put in for three thousand. And twenty-five hundred of that is for tires for a new Peterbilt, because in the wintertime, we've often studied snow tires in the rear. So come November, I have to take the street tires off, put studs on, which I find work better and cause less damage to the chain. And also on the tires, we're on a source well thing, so our tires are like fifty percent off. But that contract's gonna run up in October, and hopefully, like Nelly, will be able to renew a contract and will be able to keep those tires. And the same with our auto parts, dealing a lot with NAPA, because they're the same thing, we get our parts at fifty percent off. And that's basically it, I mean, like I said, I've talked to a couple of vendors and, like our hardware suppliers and stuff like that, we get the cleaning supplies. They, ourselves and told me, starting this month, the price is going up four percent across the board and everything. So that's why my budget's gone up, just because of times we're in. Other than that, salaries are uniform.
If you hire a junior person, it looks like your salary went down. Or stayed the same.
I did not hire anybody, and if they got rid of my salary, well, I'm sorry, I probably did something wrong, but.
My wife would've complained if the salary went down, so I was not.
Salary, but it's really flat.
That there, there's.
Or is that an intention, it's not a concession?
Yeah, I got it.
Alright, well, that should give me a heart attack, but we're.
You're saying because if, if, if the contract is up, that you can't give them a two percent raise, but there's money in the backside.
And the way that has to count it is for all the next three.
Nick, can you find out how much he has planned for us for the increase?
It's gonna be one point, it's one point.
Yeah, we have to know, we have nothing.
Let us try.
And my last question is, we only see last year, I mean, last year you spent a hundred and eighteen, you're asking a hundred and nine. Like over the past five years, drive, what is maintenance highway then, I mean, have we constantly been under budgeting on that?
No, we've been over, and I know it was over budget, but I mean, when I say are we under budgeting for you? Because you spent a hundred and eighteen last year, your budget was a hundred and three. This year, you're asking for a hundred and nine, so what I'm asking him is to look back five years and give me, have we been under budgeting this to count?
Yeah, so in nineteen, we were one oh nine, twenty, we were one sixteen, we were one eighteen, and twenty-one, but you can see, where are you at eighty-five? So, yeah, the one oh nine is probably late, but I know they tried to come in as tight as they can with the stuff and hope for the best.
So you make it up with whatever was lost in the campaign.
Yeah, sometimes some of the other departments coming under, you know.
Okay.
Can I switch line numbers?
Five two oh eight.
Two oh eight?
Five two oh eight.
Five two oh eight.
Yes.
So if you look, they spent one eighteen of their budget for one oh nine, so I just wanted to know, five years, just around the line, because we don't get that.
But if you look, Brian, like, the line above it, equipment supplies came in eight thousand under, you know, so they're trying to make it up, if one they got.
The last one was, when we went over is because unfortunately, the motor blew up, and we just, we decided what's easier to play.
I get it, you gotta be like that, it's like two hundred thousand for the motor.
Yeah, it happens, but. And finally, like the equipment.
A little longer close, that place, that was.
It's, it's.
It's, it's, I get messy, I stress out, Bob yells at me, you don't wanna say it.
Alright.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Excellent, that's, that's all I can do for the dog.
I'm playing the library. We are gonna make one Friday, that's gonna be one.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, I'm gonna call Mr. Dibble back up, Hurricane Bobby.
Forty highway. Sales and, or, and track roll. Our maintenance repair that went down a few thousand dollars, the reason for that is. There's, there's, it's beginning to get, we're starting running a problem, we're getting stuff, probably stuff that's made out of plastic, sweetheart, several first week, so. I pre-bought some block links at the beginning of the season, and also some sweeper rooms with government stores, so we'll run through. The first half of this, of next year's budget. So I can, you know, and I reduce the budget to reflect that, anything like me. So that, that, that couple thousand dollars, even though it's been more than that, like I said, it's a partial purchase. Um, our, our seeing, I hit up the price on our seeing a little bit, it's twenty-three dollars a year, because that's, that's hovering, that's right out of what we're paying right now, three yard. About, if anybody has any questions on that. If anybody has any questions on that.
Kind of sand, right?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, just for, so far this winter, you know, we, we bought, we, we budgeted for about a thousand tons of salt, we've only purchased two hundred tons of salt so far. And six hundred tons of sand, we're budgeting for like thirty-five hundred tons of sand, so, right now, I'm in pretty good shape. You know, and, you know, the bonus for, financially for the town is, you know, I can't get so much mixed material in my building at the end of the season, right? And whatever, I can't fit in that building, you guys get the money back, you know, so we try to operate in that sense. So we're not here like the second of January, having a really bad hundred thousand dollar conversation, we need to buy more materials.
What is salt going to be?
Um, right now, right now, we went from fifty-eight, sixty, last year on state, that is sixty-four, fifty-five this year, so it's not too bad, I'm budgeting.
That's not bad.
No, it's not bad, right? No, it's not bad, right? Um. Northern Hartford County towns, they've had bids come back and then not in the high nineties, you know?
And that's delivered, obviously.
Delivered, correct, right? So if, you know, if we continue along our busy winters, you know, that's next year's assault. But I think seventy eight is a pretty fair number. No, it's it's really a guessing game, you know, so.
One of the contracted services is that when you have to call in other people to plow out or?
No, we don't have, we don't contract out of any of our, any of our snow plowing. Um. We have enough drivers who do take trucks in the highway department and low boys and small trucks a lot with them, so some, we we take employees from, for demo maintenance. Or water and soil or the transport station. I know those guys drive those trucks. We don't.
Okay, that comes out of contracted services?
No, you you must have what Penn drugs to do.
So we, so we clean, so we clean catch spaces to work to comply to our our municipal storm work for, right? Which is, you know, a bunch of state regulations through deep, we have to, you know, comply to. So that's where the majority of that contracted services money comes from, in line, um, in line painting. And then then we pick, we have to pay, have a lease all the way after.
Uh, so do this.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a bit weirdly out there.
I jumped ahead. Snow and ice contracted.
Oh, snow and ice contracted or contracted because they're different there.
Somebody asked me about contractors.
Gotcha.
You refer to the snow and ice.
Snow, snow and ice contracted, fifty three ten.
Snow and ice contracted. Yeah, so that's the Board of Ed complex, that's the police stations, right?
I think it's fifteen three thirteen that went up.
In this Stone Hill Firehouse for snow plowing, so fifty three ten is snow and ice contracted, fifty three thirteen is just a contract.
And that one.
That's what we're just talking about, was catch basin plan.
Right, so that one of thirty eight hundred because they're just charging more due to that.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, we have to clean more often. But before we leave fifty three ten, right, the year before you spent a hundred thousand dollars, then you budgeted for forty eight thousand three hundred. We pick up a lot, like are we doing something that we were contracted in years past? Because we spent a hundred thousand for the less, this year we budgeted forty eight three.
The year before, Brian, it's thirty three, the year before, it's fifty four.
We've had, we've had a lot of tough seasons about this. If this is contracted snow help for Board of Ed, for the police department, but, you know. We found like in in the parking wreck, there was some money for this, and then we found in the Board of Ed, there was some money for this. Is all the snow plowing in this number? So it should not be in anybody's account.
No, so, yeah, we pay for the, for the educational part, the police department, the Stone Hill Fire Department.
And what about Bethel Fire?
No, we do Bethel Fire.
You just happen to do it.
We do that, right? So we do the old train station, Bethel Firehouse, pump stations, um, the white.
What about the parks, the counter, the parking wreck do those?
I think parking wreck has somebody doing those now. We'll jump in and do those if need be, but I think they have somebody that goes over and plows the walking trail.
Yeah, nice. I saw some tracks. So Brad, is there no other snowplow money in other towns?
Like five or six years ago, the Board of Ed was budgeting it for, and the town was, they don't budget for Ed part. It's all on the town side. It's all on the authority.
Bobby didn't take here.
Yes.
So I'm ready back to my question.
I'm sorry, did you?
Yeah, I did have a question. Thanks, thanks for your help. Do we, uh, do you have a contract or will we pay per storm?
We're, I don't have a contract or paying per storm by now.
So you're just estimating sixteen storms, whatever your experience.
Yeah, I mean, every, you know, everything we do during the winter time is based on an average snowball. Our average snowball for couples around four feet snow, right? And by the 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 sand and salt we buy for four feet of snow and then X amount of storms of sand and X amount of the plow.
So you know what it costs to pile the storms and you just budget for that and the year before was just a bad year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's all I want to know.
I mean, I think, in my opinion, I think that's the right way to go, you know?
I'm gonna tell you how to.
You know, you know, a contract, you know, you're gonna pay for whether it's snow or not, you know, um.
The only advantage with the con, with with it is the constant number in a lineup, you know, you have a constant number. You don't, there's not those variances where what, you have Brian sharing and saying, why did we spend a hundred thousand last year? Now we're budgeting for forty eight.
Yeah, but I also see myself saying, how come, you know, the contract is seventy thousand dollars and we budgeted for sixty inches of snow? But there's a, you know, a real high risk, so.
Let me talk about road construction.
Yeah. You?
How big fans. Well, what's going on? It's like.
There's a lot going on.
We'll talk tonight. Cause we we're up, let's say, the actual, the current year requested. So you're requesting less.
Yeah.
You requested last year.
Right.
But you didn't get, what you asked for last year, that's good, right? You got some, you got seven fifty F P. Last year it was.
But then there was a grant.
There's a little.
Yes.
I thought I got seven with the grant.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty with the grant.
That's that's for sure.
You got handouts too, Bobby? You're a big deal. I heard you had highways. Is that true? Show me your flip.
Did you purchase?
It said Jerusalem. Wow.
Let's get back on topic.
All right. Um, for a couple of years, we funded at around a half a million dollars, right? Um, our magic number is 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 nine, between nine fifty and nine seventy five, right? Which is a divisor of. All right, here we go. We presume our roads, we want to turn our roads over every sixteen years or so, right? That number may be a little bit more, might be a little bit less depending on the project, right? So if we take the miles of road, eight, seven miles of roads, right, divide that by sixteen years, right? That gives us five miles and change that we would like each year to re, to either rehab or maintenance overlay on those roads. All right, that keeps us in a good position. So that five miles stands five thousand two hundred and eighty, right? Times twenty five, we sold square yard, we divide that by nine, that's just a square yards, right? Eight point divided by eight point two for two inches of lift, ten point nine for inch and a half of lift, multiplied by X dollars per ton. And that brings us to our nine hundred seventy five thousand dollars, right? You know, we've we've invested a lot of money in our infrastructure over past years, right? And we still have onesies and twosies to get to and that, but we also need to maintain. And that's, that's really that number we need to be at. But we, on the budget at five hundred thousand dollars, that million dollars two years ago, right? We need to make that money up. It just doesn't, you know, the roads are holistic, we feel, you know, it's changing over and over.
The big question was about bonding that, I mean, this is my sixth year on border finance and I, I remember we, there were a couple of us that just wanted to have money in that account. Not to bond for road repair. So it has been going up incrementally a little bit, so.
Well, may I say, coming up, uh, the the board of finance veterans will remember that for a long time, we've tried to get that number to the point up. And the target has always been to be between nine hundred thousand and a billion because that's the sustainable number weighed on for our money without falling behind. So over the years, in recent years, we kind of got it up, we got it up. I think the highest we got it up to was seven hundred thousand.
Seven fifty.
Seven, yeah, and then the last couple of years, we've had tighter budgets and it started knocking back again. That's why you see the the prior year actual is a little under half a million. So we taking this opportunity because we had that grant bunnies to get him caught up. That's why current year was was moved up to a million two, million two fifty. And then we're trying to keep it at nine seventy five. So Bob just gave you a way to calculate for future, but he also has. Uh, like this, if I draw the sheet, um, I've asked him to put together the sheet with specific road names, not only for the upcoming year, but for years two and three after that. And what we want to do is let the town know, this is what the schedule is, so they know when their road is gonna get fixed. Cause in the past, it's always been, you know, we we were so far behind, not not that many years ago, that we would wait for people to call and say, all right.
It must be good.
Yeah, we'll say, okay, Bob, put together a estimate for that. Now we're trying to project it on a rolling basis, so take care of it, so.
I have a question. Sorry, well, if you have a question, maybe Bob might jump in. So last year, I believe we were at five hundred thousand for your budget. Seven hundred fifty thousand came in as a grant. This year, out of that nine hundred and seventy five thousand, how much of that is grant money? Because if none of that is grant money.
Zero.
Zero. So then actually it's gonna represent an increase of four hundred and seventy five thousand of taxpayers' money. That's something that, you know, we need to look at, although we may be showing a twenty two percent decrease. It's really not a decrease. Now, we actually have an increase. So I want to know what the actual increase is of taxpayers' money on this account. Is it four hundred seventy five thousand? So what does that equal in terms of the real, the real increase in the budget backing up the grant? That's where I'd like to see the issue.
That we, we're, we're not, we're not at the point, we're talking about revenue yet, but there's ARCA, there's new ARCA revenue calculations that can come into play in this. So it, uh, well, we may not be made in a position where we have to make up that whole four seventy five on taxpayer funds. Uh, so we're gonna talk about that part of this later as we're gonna do a bunch of.
How, how does ARCA fund a road?
Well, I, and with all, with all, like, due respect, everyone, I think it's important to talk about before we go.
I agree.
I'm not saying that they don't need the money, but, you know, when, when, when I look at this, I'm saying, wait a minute, we actually, we actually have a budget increase here by the decrease.
Yeah, so Brian, before, before we get to deliberations, uh, you will be provided revenue estimates. We try not to get, when we're doing presentations, we try to focus on expenses before deliberations, as if you want revenue.
When you say revenue, you mean the ARCA funds that could be applied here?
Yeah, the possibility of, you know, what could be applied, plus that, plus.
The poss- the possibility of, I'm just saying, it should be sort of a known thing. That that in ARCA, that it can come out of its funds, it's like the possibility, like I was saying, it's not the border code, it's the border finance, so I'd kind of like to know.
Well, they said before we, while we deliberate, we're gonna know any, any money coming in.
Before, like.
But you said possibility, so that's why I just want to make sure we will know.
There's.
Obviously, no.
There, there is a certainty that people have something. I can't tell you exactly.
Okay, you don't know how much.
Tell me, because there's a, it's a formula.
Okay.
And that's what's gonna help with the budget. So that's the harbor money. Is that the two point nine sitting in the savings account? We just haven't spent it yet.
It's not a lot, but yes. There's another two point nine.
So you guys are just gonna say, okay, let's take three hundred and put it in roads. I mean, and you're gonna tell the, tell possibly.
There's, there's. That's, that's. There is a step that you can, you can. For square, for some chapel projects, roads are probably. But there's also, um, if you remember when the ARCA funds were first announced, the the first round of that, they said, they gave us a formula that said. If you take your current budget, take your current revenue, assume the three percent growth of revenue. Uh, when we managed one over, you can use this bunch of it to replace revenue. So, uh, we actually applied a little bit of our, that money to revenue next year. This year, what we're saying is, um, it's almost like, uh, like the standard deduction of the ten forty. They say you could use up to ten million dollars just for revenue. And if there's more than that, then you have to use more than that. We don't have ten million dollars. So there's a portion that that we can apply, but I I just can't tell you exactly what that number is. Cause people keep asking treasury to explain it and treasury says, don't ask us to reprove anything, just go figure it out on your own. So that's the best.
But my only question would be, again, great, we're using the ARCA funds, but. It's really artificial because it's just like a grant. When the grant gets used up, let's say in two thousand and twenty four, it's gone. We have four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars to contribute, is what he's saying.
If we're gonna spend that.
Yes, right, like he needs to be a healthy account. So I I would just suggest in the future, and again, I'm not an accountant, I mean, Bob has much more, Brad, you have much more, but. I don't, I wouldn't want to see a negative twenty two, I would just write to be determined, because if someone didn't bring the point up.
Looks like a show me a little bit.
You know what I mean? Just to be determined based on ARCA funds or grants. I don't know if that's an accounting principle or not.
This is the first thing I agree with Brian.
I'll believe the last. Eliminating conversations are good with people.
I've never bothered to increase the hours of road repair.
Just, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, for residents of the town, you know. You know, we've done tons and tons of infrastructure improvement over the years, right? Um, you know, we we split out on those roads for real, right? And the whole idea was to get us to a point where, you know, the houses keep burning down and we, you know, the budget keeps going. And all goal is to get us there, right? And that number is there, you know, that's where we need to be.
But it's how we get there.
I understand, and that's up to you guys.
If, you know, in four years, if that money runs out, now we're looking and saying, we've only really been spending five hundred thousand of taxpayers' money. And you got there, now you gotta make up four hundred seventy five. My point may be to increase our contribution by this, just to, so we're not hit with an artificial. You know, kind of like I was talking about the snowplow, right? It's a little bit different, but in this, it's it's bigger numbers. I've seen grants run out. I've seen them in, in police grants when we hired new police officers, the grant runs out, then all of a sudden, your budget. Imagine if I'm taking four hundred seventy five thousand in one year, what does grant go to? Creates an issue for you, down the road.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so that's what I, that's why I just wanted to bring it up.
To.
Uh, a resume case.
To your point, Brian, when I provide the revenue numbers before the deliberation, there will, you will clearly see non tax revenue. And the lots of grant, the seven fifty was in there for last year's budget, where the twenty two budget, you will see a decrease in non tax revenue because of it. So that's that hole or that four seventy five that you're looking at.
Right. Bob, at some point, all the roads will be rebuilt, so your maintenance thereafter won't be as much.
Absolutely. So, so the things you won't be doing in the future, you know, and I try to project this out of a long ways down the road, you know? Thirty years from now, someplace in there, you know, one of these going to reconstruction work is we're now gonna have to go in, you know, we can get two more bits on these roads. But I have to go and pay for a milling job that costs thirty thousand dollars a mile, right? So all those things won't come into play, you know, for a long, long ways down the road. And it's, and it's, and it's there to keep that number, you know?
So is it thirty when it gets better or is it ten?
You say that again?
You rebuild a bunch of roads, so in ten years, do we start, you know, just recapping roads or is it thirty years out?
We're, we're to the point where the majority of the works will be maintenance over, right? So that reflects into the fact that each year, the amount of mileage that we can pay is gonna increase. Within that same perimeter of road dollars, right? Because we're not doing full debt reclamation as much anymore.
And when does that happen? That we don't have to reclaim?
We're not there right now.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we have, you know, my reclamation work is is down to one, you know, there are eight thousand, ten thousand square yard jobs here and there. You know, the days of, the years of doing eighty thousand square yards of reclamation work, we completed all that. So it's now just a better maintenance service.
So, right, so this, this year for for nine seventy one is all just recapping roads?
No, no, there's some milling on there, no. So you want me, did you want me to go?
No, 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 I'm just, just trying to get when, when's our problem to get back, but he's.
He's saying he still needs a million, cause he's.
Cause remember, we were spending, we were spending two million bonding when he was having their reclaim, I think what, two, two and a half million?
When it was your biggest year or something like that.
Yep.
Yeah, so I don't want anyone thinking like this number's gonna go down. He's saying he needs between nine hundred thousand and a million.
Right.
For impertuity until prices skyrocket.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing you gotta look at is, is what your mortgage cost, if your vendor, like, yeah, it's not a cost, it's an increase.
Yeah, I just look at it slightly, it's not gonna go down, but it should skyrocket.
No.
And I, I just want to fill out the record that for the six years, some of us have been on the border finance. Every single year, Bob, you've gone through the eighty seven miles divided by sixteen years, five inches, two inches. Was I supposed to write that down?
It never gets more. Every time you say. But I mean, really, you know, any, any time you like. If you want to come out and hang out with me doing a road job, I don't.
I can't.
I was on your work.
Cynthia was supposed to be on the paper last night.
I mean, I can take you through like, like the historical reasons why we do things and all these other things, actually numbers, you know? To me, it's really cool. I mean, if somebody wants to get involved in it, let's call the office.
Okay, Robert.
Okay. You don't go there anymore. They all handed out COVID, they don't want to go there.
You guys pretty happy with highway at this point?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, just in the interest of what I think Matt was saying originally, since letting you know what our needs are, I'm gonna just go back to fifty-three thirteen contracted services. Um, some of the lines you'll see there at the bottom, which I think Brad included in the sheet you have, is, is a little bit of information about MS four. This is one of the things that's, uh, kind of looming large, not just for us, but for a lot of towns in Connecticut. So, there's some background in that, um, in text here at the bottom, but basically, this MS four stands for municipal separate storm sewer systems. It stems from, we did not clean water act from EPA, comes down to deep, and deep. Made their last update in twenty seventeen, link there if you want to look into it. Um, but essentially, it's about protecting water quality in our springs by looking at stormwater discharge. So, if you can imagine, um, you know, the, if you just think of the town, and you imagine the rain falling down on various areas, the, the woods and the verting land are going to absorb that, and that's going to run into the creeks. When you build a house, it's playing on the roof, or you build a parking lot, some parking lot, that's referred to as, you know, impervious surface. So what happens, instead of it absorbing into the ground, it runs off, and that's why we have to have, you know, catch basins, sewers along the road, etc. So, um, I'll try to keep this short, but there's a lot here, so, um, what we're looking at is, um, Connecticut can, can apply penalties now, I'm not saying that we are in any danger, in the danger of any of this, but they can apply penalties for non-compliance of twenty-five thousand dollars per violation per day. Um, so, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of sort of training in the public works side of things for the various public works departments, towns, uh, in Connecticut, um, about this, and there is some help, although I don't think it's really sufficient help in terms of helping towns get on board. But, um, let me say, let me say, the other thing I'll, I'll say, the last line here is, in addition to deep, there's also a chance of, of being sued, and there's currently a lawsuit by Save the Sound, which includes some, some other nearby towns. But, um, to kind of get into the weeds here, I'm trying to keep this simple, but I'm getting into the weeds a little bit here. If you look at the requested budget for fifty-three thirteen, which is one hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred, you'll see that the change from last year is only thirty-eight hundred, so.
I'm sorry, are you on, on public works?
Oh, exactly. No, I'm sorry, well, ninety-two fifty-three. I'm sorry, no, public works, kind of, because we have all six of these accounts, more to do there.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, within that, we have, um, we have increased, so we have, we have to, some of the stuff that, as Bob mentioned, it's registered when you said it, but a lot of that contracted services work goes for catch basing. We brought up, um, a number this year to be seventy thousand for catch basing cleaning, up from forty-five thousand, which we had last year, which is twenty-five thousand dollar increase. But, we're only seeing thirty-eight hundred because we mitigated that overall increase by taking some from street segments. So, street segment went down, uh, I think it was about twenty-two thousand, even though the catch basing cleaning went up twenty-five thousand. Hopefully, I haven't lost anyone there.
No.
But my, my point is that even seventy thousand really is not enough to cover even thirty percent of our own catch bases. So, realistically, looking ahead, you know, Bob and I were crunching the numbers the other day, we're looking realistically, it could probably be closer to one hundred and twenty-five thousand per year or more to meet MS four compliance. Now, um, we were able to take care of this for now, and, and one of the reasons that we were able to take it from the street segment budget is we got a new speaker a couple of years ago, and it's working, and also haven't had, although this winter's not over yet, we haven't really had above that. Every year for this time, so, I just want to kind of put that out there, it's not really, um, it's not really an immediate thing, but MS four is coming up, and so I think people can hear more about it. I kind of wanted to give some background, hopefully that makes sense. There are two, two congluts in there. Yeah, go ahead.
So, is the expectation that the catch bases are cleaned every year, or is there a schedule? Like, over several years, do they expect the town to absorb one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for cleaning in one year?
I know, well, the twenty-five thou- one hundred and twenty-five thousand is clean half of it, yeah, so it'd be every other year.
So you don't have to clean them every year, you just have to clean half of them each year, a rotation?
What's, what's, what are they up to? It's been ramping up for the last five years, what, what, what do we have?
Yeah, they, they want us, basically what they want to do is they want us to inspect all the, every catch base that we have. Get the twenty-four hundred. Just on a little time, move hard last, start up. And they want us to determine the, the height of the material in the catch bases from the bottom to some, from the bottom to the height, that, that, that's right. And, and percentage-wise, that determines, that, that kicks in whether we need to clean or not, right, or, or the next year, or the next year, and so on, right? So, they really, really, really want us to see it's out there saying, all right, you estimate X number of catch bases to comply with the plan as the plan is laid out for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three.
So you're looking at everyone?
No.
And determining how much material's there?
No. No. Trust me, we have to clean.
If I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the next phase of this is, they're going to require the towns to map all our runoff.
Yes.
And that can cost hundreds, maybe even hit a million dollars to come up with these engineered maps showing all the runoff. It, it's, it's kind of like when you build a house, you know, we have to show all the runoff that the engineer predicts, you know, infiltrator rain guards. You guys are going to have to do that to every road in the town. And when does that start? When does that take us up?
Uh, it's, it's a few years down the road, but we're working on that now through the council of governments, they're working out regionally, and they have some regional grants. Just to give you some more background on MS four, this has been coming at us for about a decade, and it flows from the federal PBA level, to your point, right? Uh, ultimately, uh, every town will need to map and catalog every possible runoff into a stream. And, once that is mapped, you have to disconnect it. You have to disconnect, I think they want ten percent of that disconnected per year for certain years.
One percent per year of total curbing, curbing service.
Right.
What do you mean by disconnected?
Let's say, um, give you an example, where I'm going to visit my kids out in, in Washington State, they go down through the village bakery, they're baking diolos. Drive down the street, on the one side of it, there's, these things look like big plants, that, that they're deep, they're, they're rain guards. So, before they build those, the rainwater would go into the storm drain, and go, and just flow right back and fuse it down. Now what they want is they, they capture that water and it filters back down to the groundwater, that's what everybody's going to have to do.
So they're trying to eliminate the impervious surfaces, that's, you know, the parking lot, they're trying to, you know.
Well, then, you, a lot of, a lot of cities have already changed their codes in their building, parking lots that are built from basically, uh, like, if you take it kind of reblock and turn it upside, so it's hollow.
It's happening here now.
Yeah, it is.
You got to take care of your own work.
Yeah, you can fill it with riprap or gravel, so that the water doesn't runoff at all. And, this last session, the Connecticut State Legislature authorized for the first time, under state law, towns to create stormwater authorities. Stormwater authorities are very common in other parts of the country, and what they do is sort of like, we can get a building permit, you have to pay X amount of dollars for the value. With a, with a stormwater authority, you will be charged like fifty cents or seventy-five cents per square foot of, of impervious surface on the, on the property. So if you have a super long driveway, uh, if you blacked out it, you're going to pay for that. If you, and if you have gravel driveway, you wouldn't pay for that, so there's going to be an economic incentive. Right now, the only city in Connecticut that has it is London, and that maybe had special dispensation from the legislature about five years ago to create the first stormwater authority, just as a, as a laboratory, you know, to, uh, yes, pilot. Uh, and it, you know, it, it's worth, other towns are looking at their ordinances to see how it works, but when, when this is fully informed, you can bet that the state is going to come along and say, okay, now's the time. We don't care how much it costs, we've given you the tools to find that you're going to have to start cleaning those storm drains every year, then you're going to have to start spending on disconnecting. But the runoff's always.
Because of all these lawsuits, all these years, I mean, you drive to any of these shopping centers or parking lots, all the material on it, because everybody's afraid of being freaking sued.
Right.
Yeah, we used to put a little sand down from beginning of the storm, and then pile it in the end, and, and no one slipped. But now it's got to put material down because you're going to be sued.
You know, it, it, I can take you through that quickly, New Hampshire, they had, they had those, that issue pretty bad, um, they, they came about the, the, the trade group for the landscaping services, uh, one, one of the big pushes behind this, the snow piles, was they, they developed, called the Green Snow Program, and the landscapers, the private landscapers in the middle of New Hampshire prior to the program, right? Part of that program is teach you less salt, right, or you can use less salt while you might, but there's still somebody with a lawyer on speed.
Call your insurance company.
So, what they did in New Hampshire was, they actually changed state statutes, so you didn't have to carry that huge amount of liability insurance as a private contract. Right, so, so if there was a slip or fall, you were kind of on, you know, it was really big, which, that was an issue, but you didn't have to carry that liability insurance, but Connecticut's grabbed hold of that program. But they, they kind of were trying to put that on the municipalities, and not the DOT, and not provide it for the landscapers, you know, for the liability issue, right, and to reduce some of that salt, which that's one of the big problems, that's, you know, we could talk about all this MS four, we want the salt issue.
So, it's going right now.
Anyone who's, who's driven outside of town, has a day or so, and seen, you know, you're not sure if it's snow or salt, it's dry salt, and just massive amounts of it.
Yeah.
I think Bob deserves a lot of credit, because for a few people around here that use sand, uses it wisely, and I think that shows in the fact that we're not in this lawsuit.
You know.
By the way, it doesn't, it's not.
You know, we do a lot of, you know, a lot of these things that, that are in, you know, the MS four, like, we try to reduce amount of curving on the sides of the roads, and let water soak in naturally on the sides, right, instead of being, you know, a high flash flow, a river system, right? And let it absorb on the side, so, so when we remove curve, we remove curve. You know, there's all those things that, you know, we're stewards of the environment, right? So if you look on the, you know, if you look on Connecticut East Coast map, and you'll see all the towns around us have a lot of red lines. Those are, those are heavily flooded streams, and if you look at that, there's not a red line on the map, right? So, when Eric was mentioning about the state of Sound Law, since they went after all the red lines on the map around here. You know, fortunately, we're not in one of those red lines, you know, and it's the little things we do, you know, prior to this.
Ready for the answer?
Yeah, let him reach you up, Mel, for, you know, the one that's up there.
Okay, uh, next topic is transfer station, which we can probably decide about a minute to hang on. That's very easy, there's a three percent increase in contracted services, lots of two thousand dollars, which the anticipated three percent increase in ticket fees on starting July first.
Brad, you're going to give us the revenue, how far on are we on, on breaking even on this?
Depends on the year, the last couple of years, it's been a bad judge, because early COVID, uh, they waived the fees for the transfers, they just didn't take the contact information out. So, um, it comes close to breaking even now, um.
And we'll see the revenue next step, when you.
Yeah.
I will tell you that we are, we probably will be part of a jar of resource recovery. Uh, because of the strength of that organization, we've had three towns ask to join it in the last two years. And we negotiated a contract where we, we are paying over ten dollars a month for recycling. MSW is separate fee, but the going rate to tip is ninety-six plus, ninety-six to one hundred and sixty, but we pay tax. So we, it's, it's a benefit to be part of that organization.
How many permits are out there?
Oh.
At least a lot, right?
At least a lot, plus up to like three thousand.
Yeah, just a free table back?
Okay, so, uh, no, no question that transfer station, right? But guys want to move out to building, building maintenance?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, um, fifty-one oh one, we've changed the salary, um, quite a decrease, we had two retirements, uh, this year, and we found two good young new hires who are, well, a lot of new energy to the department, so, that's great, and, um, that's what happened with the salaries there.
And just how many, just as you go, how many salaries does that include?
Five.
Five salaries.
The one, one of which is supervising, but it's in the. Um, let's see, um, maintenance and repair, so again, this is another one of those things, um, where we're trying to bring the account up to the historical average. That gives the numbers, and we have, we have five-year historical averages. Close to one hundred and eighty thousand per year, and, um, so, that's why we're trying to bring it up to that number there. And that's what that change represents, uh, because this account is, because, and again, sort of, this account becomes sort of a gray area between routine maintenance, to slightly larger things that kind of spill over into what could become capital projects. So, depending on the nature of things, uh, it could be pretty complicated, um, just, you know, uh, replacing windows, whatever. Um, so, historically, I think this has been kind of an undefunded account, we've been, we've been dealing a lot of repairs, municipal sound, just alone, we've got increasing elevator repair costs, front doors, cooler needs to be replaced, so, um, again, that's something that we, long-term, we want to get to a point where we're proactive, that that's not such an issue that we're getting ahead of ourselves, so that all ties into that, but in terms of why, um, why we're increasing that, that's basically it, okay, that's, that's all I have on the notes here.
And, this, this work that's being done with these five people, they do work at the schools, if you just kind of explained to everybody that, that part of this is working in schools, that nothing to do with the four sixty.
Um, right.
Not the tunnel, the tunnel needs to build.
I understand the friend, exactly, but you'll see the four sixty come up also as maintenance.
Ability. So, this longevity thing is sort of something that's not, doesn't exist anymore, right? Because I thought it was something. Is it still part of contracts? Because I thought.
Part, not true, we have to go forward.
Right, so who, what's this going, because you said that the increased salaries over time and longevity is a point, so how many employees are still getting longevity?
I believe there's two.
Two, so two new ones.
Because you have three that were, no, one. Because you have four that have been hired in the last two or five years.
Okay, so that's like two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
That's just for sticking around, or?
Pretty much.
All right, I just wanted to confirm that, that's not changing.
Questions?
Anybody?
All right. Treework is going to be, this, we still have.
So we just ripped this one out?
This used to be our most. Four hours.
You have a court war yet?
I was so looking forward to the tree work, so.
So Bob, you're in the temporary tree ward right now, you just said.
You just cut it in the bottom, or no?
Yeah, the tree ward, you know, if, if the tree surgery guy says, we thought it's not tree surgery, it's not brain surgery, it's tree surgery, back it off. But, no, I'm not a tree ward, but I, I'll, I'll function as that way. If I need somebody for a legal opinion, I do get somebody that's available. If I need somebody for a legal opinion, I do have somebody available for that, and do I have a full-time tree ward? No, I don't. I don't want to, it's just. You know, like, it's like a really weird. All in its heart. Yeah, but I can't.
But they can't take tree jobs.
I've, you know, I've searched all over the place, and, you know, I had a couple of people that were, you know, eating out of cereal bowl, but then they kind of went the other way and trying to retire.
Did you, did you say cereal bowl? I'll buy that at the. Yeah, yesterday.
They have to be a licensed. Yes, I need, you know, if it comes down to a court opinion, I need somebody that's a licensed.
That gives them the due to call. That gives them some to do at the car. We're working on that, yeah.
They can't fight him either.
Tree walk one for all the towns.
Yeah.
And then contracted services, and then kind of, you hire your guy and take the freedom.
Yes, that's what that is, yeah.
Yeah.
They're gonna take care of all the predictions.
All right, you guys want to move on to registrar's orders?
Yes, please.
All right, thanks Eric, thank Bob.
Okay.
Mary and Megan, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Initiative.
Thanks for warming up the seats.
Order in the corner, order in the corner.
Good evening.
Okay.
Okay, Tim, so with two people, Randy, Kayla, where's your.
Uh, for fiscal year 2023, we're proposing a budget of 103,510, including requested salary increases. Uh, and this is a 2% reduction from the current year's budget, and I know you were taking a look at prior year expenditures, and I would just throw those at the. So we're, we're showing a much higher number, but keep in mind that that was the COVID year. And town clerk hired about a dozen part-time people for about three months to do absentee ballots, and they were charged to our budget, so it, it just.
Threw it way off.
Yeah, so forget about that.
The difference between Tim's number and what you see in your book is their ask for increases in their salaries was moved to wage adjustment.
Yes, so what was your, what was the number you just said then?
Oh, 103,510.
103,510, okay.
And then just as a point of reference, um, and I'm so glad we have. Mary O'Leary here, she was, uh, the prior, um, registrar voters along with Mary Lignars, and the last budget that they proposed. Of fiscal year 2015, that began July 1, 2014, was 102,336. So we're asking for $1,200 more than was budgeted eight years ago, so we're, uh, we're trying to keep things through.
Sitting over here.
Congratulations to people.
Thank you.
Salary request increase.
Oh, that was the wage.
It goes in the wage.
Yeah, so that's what they're thinking about.
I gotta remember which.
10, so your request budget is 103,510, but this 99, 260.
That's right.
Okay. Yeah.
Now, a couple of things are, are coming up this year. We're working right now on redistricting, so after the census, the, um, legislature. Had to rebalance the state senate's, uh, seats, districts, as well as the house representative's seats. And there are going to be some changes, but most importantly for us is we're going to go from five district to four. So that will help us a little bit, um, but things will, things will look a little bit different as well. One, the, the district number five only had 527 voters in. So we ended up having to staff for, for general election, we would have to staff that district. Where now we won't have to staff, uh, and the real, the people will be shifting, we're still gonna have three polling places at Stone Hill, this building, and Gary's school. But some people, because of shifts in the districts, who may have voted, say it's Stone Hill, are now going to be going to Gary's school. There may be some that were at the municipal center that may be going over to Gary's school. But, um, we're, we're in the middle of that now. We were planning on budgeting for the redistricting in this go-round, but. They ended up finishing their work early enough so that we are able to jump on it now, and I think we're going to be able to pay for it now. Because in the current year, we did not have a primary for the municipal election, and we budgeted for a primary, so that, that may help us. But it's, it's going to be an expensive endeavor because we have to do a, a mailing to every registered voter. It's 12,350 or so. So it, there will be a price to it. We're looking into the possibility of whether we can, uh, do it as postcards, first-class postcards. Important thing is we want to get them returned. If someone doesn't live there, we want them, those postcards returned to what's not owed. So we do have, you know, some savings there, and what we try to do is find savings in the budget so that. You'll have room to provide increases, and what we're, what we're requesting is that. The four people, four people in the office, two registrars and two deputies, and so we were looking for a total of, aggregate total of. $2,650 in salary increases, and that would be a thousand each for the registrars, and. Don't see, oh, well, it looks like the final, final amount as a base salary would be $20,500 for registrars and 6,800 for the deputies. And we're also asking that the canvas stipend just be rolled into the base salary. This is a year-round project that begins in January and ends in December, so it just makes sense to include it as, as part of the base rather than saying it's, it's a extra. But you have any other questions?
Brad, you have anything about that, with the, the salary and the stipend, or?
You, I think what you'd have to do, if you guys set the elected official salaries, is if you change their salary. And increase it by that amount plus anything you can add to raise, say it includes the canvassing, then would that work, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think you'd have to say that. That new salary includes the canvassing, because they get paid by state statute for the canvassing, I believe, correct Tim?
Uh, no, that was just past precedent.
Okay, all right. So when, yeah, so when you set the salary and say it includes canvassing.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question, it's small, but I want to make sure I follow.
103,510 versus the 960 is maybe 250.
Yeah, I gotta go back, what we don't do, do the deliberations for the board's like, I will tighten that up, there were some confusions about rating it up, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Guys, I, I think part of that too is. The voters voted on a budget that became the budget, and after the budget was set. The board acted on salary increases in May, yeah, so then we're kind of working from, so the, and so the budget amount never changed, the salaries did. So we're kind of marching towards what we're spending. But anyway, so that's why we tried to ask for the full amount, and then you act on the full amount. And then it never looks like you're approving an amount that's more than we even requested.
Brad, if it's 103,510, then what is the percentage of increase from last year's budget?
I don't.
It's minus 1.85. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, that's.
No, you're right.
Yeah. Minus 1.85.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board of finance?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Grand finale.
So the library is the second, the last one in your book.
Oh, yeah, can you give Megan co-hosting?
Yeah, if you'll allow me, and just once you've logged in, then I'll let you co-host.
Sorry, Megan, I thought you were locked in because I saw the meeting.
I know, it's, um, it's my supervisory staff. So good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having us. I hope because we were last, that we will be treated the best. We should have.
It's gonna be.
A positive incentive to get an extra percentage. Um, we have our budget in front of you. By the way, I'm Mary O'Leary, I'm an old registrar voter. And now, or registrar. Former.
And a best one.
And all, and all those things, um, and now I have the pleasure of being a chairwoman at the library for the year. Um, and I have the distinct pleasure of working with Megan Dean, so. She's the best thing that has ever happened to Bethel. Uh, this is our fourth year being here with the budget, and I can tell you it's exciting. She's doing wonderful, wonderful things. We have a small, um, increase, 2.1, as you see, it's mainly salaries. Uh, we had no increase last year with COVID, no salary increases at all. We returned a lot of money to the town. I think we've done our part, but it's time this year to re-recognize our good staff. Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to Megan, just brief presentation for you. If she can find it. I'm almost there. I know it's late, um, when we originally planned the presentation, we had considered that we have quite a few board members, and we wanted to really. Kind of explain what the library does, and then we saw we relaxed. Maybe not at nine o'clock at night, um, so it's quick. Okay, so this year, we're asking.
Megan, can you mute your phone, because you're live in the meeting to the concert twice? Or you're live, never one of us.
So I'm muted on.
Okay.
Okay, so this year we're asking for a 2.1 to, uh, increase to our budget. The, this will allow us to continue to maintain all the services we currently provide, um, with adequate staffing levels. Now, the majority of that increase is salaries. Uh, the reasons of that is last year, we did not ask for the increase to our budget, which means that we had to find the funds for the budget to provide the contracted increases. And we did that by not replacing staff as they left, because we had reduced services, so we didn't have the need for staff. However, this year, we've been filling those positions as we return to the services we had pre-COVID. With that return, we've also had to add services, so the staffing levels that we had pre-COVID needed to return to. Uh, we are also expecting contractual increases in the coming year, uh, so we need to be prepared for those as well. So we have built in that into our budget. So this definitely has provide services to five service desks throughout the building. It also provides virtual services through our website chat, uh, our social media accounts, and our email. So we have a lot of different service points that we need to be facilitated. Then this list here is some of the main roles that staff fills during the day on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis. So we have a lot of different activities taking place. The things in maroon are services that began during COVID, and we found that the public, the public really appreciated, and we will continue even as we move forward with COVID.
I'm sorry.
No, absolutely.
Could you just, um, tell us what's in maroon? I can't.
Oh, absolutely, no, no worries. Um, so curbside pickup. Uh, that's where patrons can call in and have items checked out for them and left outside at a convenient hour, so they can pull right out, they don't have to park, they can grab their materials and head out. Then one-on-one, uh, virtual device advice. We have a lot of people who need to learn how to use Zoom. Uh, any content materials, download databases, and they don't really feel comfortable coming into the library yet. Uh, or they, you know, their schedule doesn't work with ours, so we set them on virtually. We, uh, we walk them through how to get on Zoom, and then we show them how to use all the features, or we'll have screen share with them. So we can show them step-by-step how to access a database, how to do a database search. Uh, we have people who need help referring the, uh, DMV website. We will screen share, and we'll walk them through how to set up an appointment, how to find, uh, different services, so we've done quite a bit of that in the last year. And we have a bag of books, which is a program where a family or adult can fill in form. They can tell us, if you're, let's say, a child, they can tell us their child's grade, age, reading interest, the last couple of books they read, how many books they were hoping to get. And then our librarian staff will select books that meet that criteria, so it's customized book selection. Uh, chat service via the website, when you go online now to our website, you'll see a chat box, so you can ask for assistance there. It's, um, live during all of our, uh, operating hours. Now, um, if we have snow day, the building's closed, uh, full-time staff still, um, from home, man the chat service. So if you're home on a snow day, there is a librarian ready to assist you if you want to access our virtual services. And we started pre, uh, creating virtual tutorials. So when you enter our website and you see, uh, database, you can click on a link and it'll show you how to use it. So if you're, if you cannot connect with us during the day, at night, you still have the abilities to get information. Hyper programming, which is very much of what we're doing tonight, um, allows patients to choose whether they want to participate from home or participate in the library. Uh, this has changed how we do staff programs too, because now a lot of times, the staff member running the program is in front of the screen. And then we have a staff member monitor and monitor the chat, providing tech support, making sure people are let into the program. Uh, then we also have just as you in programs for you to attend from home, and that's great, because you've been able to get programmers typically we don't be able to get. And now during COVID, we put in a story walk around the library. I'm not sure if you're all familiar with story walk is, but it's interactive, uh, story experience. So we take pictures, both to break them apart, and then the pages are spread out around the property. And then we put in questions and challenges within them, so it's really passive programming, and it's great when we put people inside, because they were able to still come utilize the property. So we really spent a lot of time enhancing the exterior of the building. We got an ARP brand for tables outside as well. So we are now, um, maintaining that every, in the winter and fall, we change it every two months, and the summer we change it also. Any other, and you know, feel free, please interrupt me if you have questions. Um, any other questions on staffing responsibilities? So these are just some of the examples of things that we do. Um, in the summer, we provide outdoor services to the community, people walking by, um, people with their children coming around. We do one-on-one sessions, we provide printing, fax, and scanning support, which we've been doing quite a bit of in the last couple of months. Uh, tax season's coming up, so we're getting a lot of requests for tax forms. Uh, we did outdoor programs throughout the year. We actually went all the way through December this year, because we had a lot of parents who weren't quite ready to bring their kids inside, but still wanted that agent. So, and it's a lot of fun being outside, it makes it a much more interesting experience. We check the times the trains go by and we plan for that, so that way, you know, we do train solos and things. We check the times the trains go by and we plan for that, so that way, you know, we train solos and things like that to really tie in the community. And I want to talk a little bit about technology services, which is really the maintenance budget. It is the same as it was last year, but I really wanted to showcase this because we've been doing a lot in the way of upgrading the library and making it more supportive to the community. And the last year, we've had a high demand for meeting spaces. And for meeting spaces, uh, I think too, since more people are working from home, we're having people who need just a space to have a meeting or, uh, you know, have a telehealth appointment. We have groups coming in, so we have the boys scouts and the girl scouts, Odyssey of the Mines, through schools. We're now booking Monday through Friday, the school tutoring program, the kids get bussed over to the library and they utilize our space to offer those tutoring services. We run programs on Fridays, Flex Program at the schools where they bring kids over and we do stem work with them and work on development. So we really needed to enhance our meeting spaces, putting in smart TVs, projectors. Right now we have one room that is equipped for that and we have one mobile station, which runs with camera equipment, recording, TV. But we do need more, cause now with the hybrid and Zoom programming, we're also struggling to provide those services to the public while also utilizing that for our programming. So we have been using the maintenance budget to really round out those services and be able to provide more to the community. So currently, this is the list of equipment that we do have. The equipment maintenance budget allows us to maintain this equipment, to pay for the software that's required to utilize this. And a few of these will pay for with grants, we do have to maintain within our budget. And then the other large account we have is books and materials, we're not asking for a large increase to this year, just to take into account on the database contracts which go on the annual.
Does anyone have any questions? What equipment was funded?
So our 3D printer?
Sorry, my thought is the presentation she just did has been uploaded to.
Oh, no, I'm not.
So quite a bit of our budget of equipment, which we didn't list all of on there, um, we pay for private donations. So we, we purchase selling chains, uh, some of the 3D materials and just like that.
What, what kind of donations, like what kind of amounts are, that you get?
There is, we get, you know, a hundred dollars here, a hundred there, in the past we've had, um, a larger donation that was specific for net use for furnishings. So the donations in the grants we get we use to enhance the libraries. So we're not going to come to you when we have furniture issue, we look to private funds. Right now the library board will be providing furniture for the lobby as the furniture we currently have is starting to fall apart.
What about, um, so I know that last year and you, you were working a lot of digitizing and you're definitely getting totally launched in the virtual world. So do you think that, um, I mean, once, I don't know what's gonna happen with people thinking about going into a building. I don't know, I'll go into any building, I don't care. But do you see that traffic picking up inside of the?
Three months ago, if you'd asked, I'd be a little nervous. We have been incredibly busy lately. We have had days where all the furniture in the lobby was full, the children's apartment was full, we've had to add additional staff to the breakfast desk. Because people are coming in and they're needing assistance. So right now I see you're very close to pre-COVID numbers.
Do you have volunteers?
Yes, we've brought back volunteers, uh, we have about twelve volunteers at the moment.
What kind of things do they do?
They do shelving, shelf reading, uh, program effects. We're currently doing an R S O D project where we're adding each individual item in the library. That will speed up check-in and check-out and allow us to better track materials so they don't get misplaced in the shelves. So volunteers will be assisting on that soon, going to the shelves and checking each item.
Anyone have questions?
Just, uh, Megan, what was the increase, your overall increase for the year?
The number or the percentage?
The percentage.
Uh, two point one two.
Okay, so that was right. Oh, you said three.
I'm gonna open up, it says two percent, so, so I don't know if that's.
Okay, just.
Doesn't even go into the detail, it'll say two point one two.
Right.
The little green number.
That summary one doesn't go out that far. It's annoying. I have lots of things on my list.
Yeah, yeah, there's.
I know you're all ready to go home, but if no one else has any questions, I do just want to comment that I am extremely proud of the staff that I currently have and the library board that supports that staff because when COVID did hit, so many libraries shut down, it was scrambling to figure out what to do. But the staff that we have already, we already had redeveloped our technology plans, so all of our full-timeers laptops for laptops, they were all able to go home and convert our services, our website was in the. To be more icon-driven, to make easier reviews. We switched all of our phones over, developed the chat, they invented our programs. And we were able to re-invent our library services. So at this point, we're not looking to replicate where we were before COVID, cause that doesn't exist anymore. Now our staff are looking at how we're going to continue to evolve to benefit the community and to meet their changing needs. So I have to say the staff that we have right now, that we have gone and bought, we've been able to support other libraries in the state and help them to get their programming to the same level ours is. So they've just done a fantastic job, I just want everyone to know that.
Thanks, I can't speak to those individuals that don't know them, but I will say I appreciate you very much. For always being on my side, I appreciate your enthusiasm, your efficiency and your conscientiousness. Well, my support.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was Trump, man.
Oh, now that everyone's gone.
Hey Megan, well, before you leave, I have a question for you. So I'll take a motion to adjourn or something. For the favor.
Do I have a question for you, Karen?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second sir.
Okay, all the favor? Oh, you're, well, you can say, you can clean out and stuff.
Guys, if, if you wouldn't, guys, if you wouldn't mind, all of this stuff has to be put away. So if you.